Regular meeting of the city council will now come to order. Please call the roll, Mr. Clark.
Councilor Capone.
Here.
Councilor De La Sola.
Here.
Councilor De Florio.
Here.
Councilor Hanlon.
Here.
Councilor Matuzki.
Here.
Councilor McKinnon.
Here.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Councilor Napolitano.
Here.
Councilor Sani.
Here.
Councilor Simonelli.
Here.
President De Perro.
Here.
Eleven yeas, eleven members present, sorry.
The audience please stand and join us in saluting the flag.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one second. For a moment of silence, the city lost two very special people over the last couple of weeks, one being school committee member, Robert Carrero, and the other retired firefighter, Warren Murray. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we open up the public participation for the ten-minute period that we allow before the meetings.
Second.
And that you are to instruct the, anyone that speaks, that, you know, we don't deal with it and so forth. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded to open public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a sign-in sheet, Councilor De Florio? As the audience knows the rules, just so everyone knows, there's a ten-minute period for public participation. Every speaker is allowed two minutes.
Rixi Fuentes.
Hi, my name is Rixi Fuentes. I am sixteen years old. I go to Everett High School. Currently in my junior year. I play soccer for Everett. And today I'm here to talk to you about a couple of things. Two summers ago, we did a collaboration with La Comunidad and Everett Haitian Votes, which we called One Everett, which we went out with a couple of other high school students to knock on doors and encourage people to vote and get the word out to the rest of the people. It was a good, a good summer. We did a couple of improvements. But although we did work with them and we did what we thought was correct, I also have a story to share about my personal family. Because due to the elections, Donald Trump was elected, of course, and my family was very scared because I do come from an immigrant family. My aunt and her two children were very scared. The day after Donald Trump was elected, they were quite scared to go outside, to go to school because they thought that when they come back, ICE would have taken their mother, which was a tragic story to hear. The next day, they were crying, my sister also. But my mom was like, no, it's okay. Have faith in God. I do assist to Immaculate Concession. Quite a good church. And it was just a tragic story to feel scared and just very sad story for my personal family. All I have is you guys sitting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Eliana.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Eliana Panameño.
Hi.
Sorry, I've been sick for the last week, but I work at La Comunidad as a community organizer and I also develop different programs there that support our immigrant families here in Everett. I just wanted to share with you all a little story that came out last week with WBUR. And I'm not sure if you are aware of it, but I have copies for all of you and I just want to share it out with you right now. You can pass it out, not just keep one. But the title of the story is called "It's Not Fair: Haitian Teens in Everett Worry About U.S. Residency Decision." So, because of the work of La Comunidad, but also the Everett Haitian Community Center, we've been supporting immigrant families, not only Latino families, but families from Haiti, from Morocco, from different parts of the country, gaining their immigration status, but also for them to learn English, find job support. But this story is really captivating because there's two teens that go to Everett High that are sharing their experience, like Rixi has mentioned, of just being really scared living here in the city of Everett and not having really somewhere that they feel that they can feel supported by that as well. One quote that really stands out for me is on the third page where it says, "For me, it's a catastrophe," he says in French. "It's a disarrangement. It's really something terrible compared to how we used to live, how we used to relate to one another, and how life was before. And now, all of a sudden, because of problems with papers or social pressures, all of that has disappeared. It's really sad." So, this is a third-year Everett High student who plays soccer and who has really excellent grades as well and who also participates in our Everett Votes program along with Rixi, who spends most of the time, like, twice a week, registering different residents to vote and just doing the civic engagement part to learn about local elections because, as you may know, we don't participate as much as we should in those. But I just want to make you aware of this story because this is something that's really common, not only in our students, but also the parents. And this article doesn't even touch on the social pressures or also the mental health effects that this could have on a family unit. When you are very anxious, when you're fearful, even if you might have papers as well, it's something that's really important for us to bring the attention, but also to have the conversation that as city councilors, but also as local government, what are we going to do to protect half of the constituents that live here in the city of Everett? As you all know, that Everett is a very diverse city. Some say it's the first diverse city in Massachusetts. Others say it's the second most diverse. But either way, I just want to bring the question to the table. What are we going to do to protect our constituents that have elected you all as representatives? And I know that sometimes it might seem that there's not much that we can do because we look at, okay, that's more of a question for our federal government, but there's a lot of things that we can also do for our local government. First, starting with passing even a proclamation or something from the city that says that we are here to support you all. And also, as a daughter of immigrants from one of the most violent countries in the whole wide world, El Salvador, I'm just here to you, to talk to you today, that I have my masters in social work and that my sister that's sitting here has her doctorate in physical therapy, and there's a lot of things that we can also do here in this country and specifically in the city of Everett. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for taking time of your busy schedule to having us this evening. I'm Reverend Meland de Rosier, Executive Director of the Everett Haitian Community Center and also part of this collaborative partnership with La Comunidad Inc. of the Everett Vote Projects, which you have heard about both from Dixie and Eliana. We run this program between the two organizations, Latino kids, Haitian kids, building youth leaders, building a community, building voting blocks, building, doing civic engagement, civic participation. And I would like, just for a moment, just imagine for those of you who have children and for those of you who do not have children, I know the president is quite young, but just imagine in the future, because we do pray and hope that the day will come, we will celebrate your kids as a future more leader in our city. Of course, I know, we do believe in you. And just, I would just, for you, just like to, just think for a moment, and which I know that you don't, don't listen to or see or view the color of the skin, but just a child saying this. And this is one of the students, part of our program of La Comunidad, Everett Haitian Community Center, a young Haitian student among three that were interviewed at the Everett Haitian Community Center by WUNR and NPR. I feel sad because I don't know where I'm going in the future. It hurts, but I'm getting out of school. And they're using me for the basketball, which is great because I'm good at it. And then I'm walking down the street, but I have fear that somebody might stop me, that I can be deported. Not only myself, but a lot of my friends, a lot of youth, a lot of families. Said that in Haitian Creole, a very prominent student in Everett High School, recognized for his skills, a newcomer. And he continued to say he has experienced death in his family and never cried, a tough guy. But the situation brought tears into his eyes. And dear councilors, I was there during that interview, not only where the youth melt into tears, but even the interviewer on NPR cried like a child. And I'm not going to say much, and I just want to leave you with that picture, that panorama of a young child contributing to the city, contributing to the school system, contributing to this country, a newcomer, still learning English, but doing good in school, want to become an American citizen. And I want to ask you, how will we find in your heart independently to ensure that all kids are safe? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aye. That's the last of the sign-in sheet, so I make a motion to close public participation. No other speakers.
Motion made and seconded to close public participation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I just want to make a quick announcement. If anyone in the audience is parked on Broadway, they are going to begin street work out front, so if anyone's parked on Broadway, they will tow, just to warn everyone. Thank you.
Okay.
Regular business, Mr. Clark?
Mr. President, we, I do have a sign-in sheet, so if we could please suspend the rules and take item number nine.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules and take item number nine. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine.
Item number nine. It's an ordinance offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro as president to amend the city of Everett's voting ordinance to allow electric generation plants, substation uses by special permit in the lower Broadway waterfront mixed-use sub-district by revising Appendix A Table of Use Regulation use category. This has already been enrolled. This is for an indictment.
Favorable action on the order.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order. Please call the roll ordinance. Please call the roll, Mr. Clark.
I'm sorry.
This is for an indictment. Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor De La Sola.
Yes.
Councilor De Florio.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Matuzki.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano.
Yes.
Councilor Sani.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Here.
And President De Perro.
Yes.
We have eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Has been ordained.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else on the sign-in sheet, Councilor?
I don't have anybody else on the sign-in sheet, so we can revert back to the regular order of business.
Item number one.
Item number one. It's an order offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro as president to appoint Emmanuel Tavares as sworn lawyer for District Gas of Massachusetts Corporation located at 18 Rover Street for an unpaid term of one year expiring October 2018.
Favorable action on the order.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order. Please call the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor De La Sola.
Yes.
Councilor De Florio.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Matuzki.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano.
Yes.
Councilor Sani.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Here.
And President De Perro.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
The order has passed. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman, can we take item number two and five collectively and grant further time?
Motion made and seconded to take item number two collectively. Please call.
And accept the committee report and place on file.
Accept the committee reports.
Item number two, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano in the interest of public safety that the animal control services be expanded to address a wider range of animal issues in the community with a recommendation to refer to the mayor with a request that the appropriate training be provided to the animal control officer and ISD personnel with a further time in committee to obtain an update from the mayor on the subject matter. Item number five, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor John Leo McKinnon to invite the mayor's office, designees from the chief of police, the police patrolmen, and superior unions, and reps from the auxiliary police to the next public safety committee to begin talks on moving forward with a plan for all work together, for all to work together to move the city forward with a recommendation to grant further time and to invite the police chief, patrolman's union, superior officers' union, auxiliary police chief, and mayor's chief of staff to the next meeting for an update with a further request that if they are to be absent, to submit a written response on what the plans are to utilize the auxiliary police unit.
The motion was to accept both committee reports, place on file, and to grant further time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, can we take item number three and four collectively and refer back to sponsor?
Motion made and seconded to take three and four collectively. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Please read them.
Mr. President, was that three and four?
Yes.
Three, four. Thank you. Item number three, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Michael McGlaughlin regarding the traffic flow at Suites Circle and Centilli Circle with a recommendation to refer back to sponsor. Item number four, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Stevenson Simonelli to place a moratorium on storefronts becoming places of nonprofit and places of worship with a recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Motion was to accept the committee report on both items, place on file, and refer both back to sponsors. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number six is an order offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro as president to authorize a city building revolving fund for the purpose of funding related to maintenance of city buildings. Just so you know, the proper motion for this is no action. It's still in committee. Nothing came out. It's just on the agenda incorrectly.
No action taken.
It's still going to be a motion, still going to take.
Like the clerk said, motions take no action. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item seven.
Item number seven is an order offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro as president, a petition for a mechanical license from TNT Auto Repair, Inc. at 39 Garden Street.
Accept the committee report, place on file, and favorable action on the order.
I just want the clerk to explain what happened in committee, if all the paperwork's in order and all that.
Yes. So, this has been on the agenda for a few weeks. The petitioner had to go to Florida to help family who was part of that hurricane, so he couldn't make the last meeting, so it was granted further time. So, he came back this evening. It was two owners, both, two owners Thiago and Thiago, they came with another representative of the business. They explained that they had been in the business before, both in Somerville and in Everett. They currently both live in Methid. They're operating this under Michael Vigarito's property at 39 Garden Street. He is going to relinquish the license. At the same time, you are going to issue it. That is the agreement. He's written a letter. I have a lease and all of the paperwork are in order.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The motion was to accept that report, place on file, and for favorable action. Please call the roll.
Councilor Capone.
Yes.
Councilor De La Sola.
Yes.
Councilor De Florio.
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon.
Yes.
Councilor Matuzki.
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon.
Yes.
Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Napolitano.
Yes.
Councilor Sani.
Yes.
Councilor Simonelli.
Yeah.
And President De Perro.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item number eight.
Item number eight, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilor Peter A. Napolitano that a representative from community business, community development, and the mayor's office appear in community and business development committee to provide an update and plans for the developing of the property at 9597 Summer Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to grant further time on this. At our next meeting, we're advised by the mayor's chief of staff that we need to adjourn to executive session to be able to discuss the details on this. So, I just ask grant further time for executive session at our next meeting.
Motion made and seconded to accept the report, place on file, and grant further time, so we may go.
Councilor, is it granting further time at this current meeting or back in committee? That's what I was wondering.
It's, it's actually came back to us tonight.
Correct.
And it's just, they've asked us to bring it back at the next meeting, hold it over till our next meeting
Next council meeting.
To when we can meet in executive session and get the details.
So, accept the report and lay it over to our next council meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Should we invite people? I'm sorry.
It'll be the same people that are on here.
Yeah, they were, they were already part of the last one. They'll get the same notice. We don't have to re-invite them.
Item number 10.
Item number 10 is an order offered by Councilor Anthony De Perro as president to accept a policy against fraudulent conduct, misappropriation, and corruption.
What's your pleasure, councilors. Matuzki?
Just a quick question, Mr. President. This is for city employees?
All employees.
All employees?
Yes.
And we have to accept some kind of, I mean, isn't it against the law to commit fraud and misappropriate money and corruption already?
It is, but if, my understanding is this is just a formal policy to have in place to take action if such thing occurs.
Okay. Well, I hope that anybody does, that works for the city that does any of these things is arrested and, you know, to the max. It's the taxpayers' money. I mean, I don't know of any fraud or any misappropriation, but if we have to accept it, I mean, it just makes common sense to me. Thank you.
Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, I know this was in committee for a while, so I'll, through the chair, if there's somebody who could explain to me on the second line that in addition to city employees, agents, elected and appointed officials, what specifically or who specifically are we talking about with elected officials? Is there someone?
Mr. Demus is eager to appear if you want to invite him up. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to invite the CFO before us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome, Mr. Demus.
Good evening. Eric Demus, CFO.
Through you, Mr. President, to our guest.
And if I may, just real quickly before we add, one of the questions that was asked in committee actually was sort of related to the topic that you're talking about. As such, I made two small revisions to the policy. I have them highlighted in red that I'd like to distribute to the council right now.
Once everyone has a copy, if you could just highlight those changes.
I will. Mr. Chair.
Councilor Capone has the floor.
Can we lay this over to next time? Do we have to vote on this now?
There are two changes to the document. They can be found on pages two and pages three. Both revisions are highlighted in red, and the only revisions on both pages just specifically list the city council president. So, at the bottom of page two, under Procedures and Responsibilities, Section A Reporting Procedure, you will see within that paragraph, City Council President highlighted in red. And then on page three, at the bottom of the page, Section B Responsibilities, again, in that paragraph, you will see the City Council President included and highlighted in red. Those are the only revisions that have been made. And I made those revisions based upon discussions out of committee.
So, all right, so I see those, and so what that does, it adds the city council president as an administrator. But at the end of the day, if I read this, well, from the old version, I don't know if this carried over. I think it did. But under the old version, it's the chief of staff or the designee that will investigate any kind of violations or any kind of issues. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are no other changes or revisions from the document that you have in front of you.
Well, at the outset, let me, let me just echo some sentiments that one of my colleagues had said, and I had mentioned this the last time because I'm the one that asked to kick it over to this meeting to take a look at it. I don't believe there's anybody in this room who's in favor of fraud or corruption. My concern is that as elected officials, we're having a member of the executive branch overseeing the legislative branch. So, we as elected officials are always accountable to the people and we're always accountable to the laws of the Commonwealth in the United States. But I think it's an infringement upon the separation of powers to have the legislative branch have to answer to another branch in the way this is phrased. So, what I would say is I think a policy to have it, absolutely. It's a good idea to have a policy. It's the law even without the policy, but sometimes people need a little reminder that you're not supposed to break the law. What I would recommend to my colleagues is I would ask that we remove elected. The other thing that I would ask is where it has prohibited conduct, where we talk about assets of the city, I think one of the assets that we have in the city are personnel. So, in addition to equipment, I would insert city personnel as an asset of the community that shouldn't be misappropriated. that shouldn't be misappropriated or misapplied or anything of that nature. But barring those two things, I don't see a huge concern, because like I said, at the end of the day, we're here to serve the public. Collectively, we serve the public, and we're here to honor the rules and laws of the state and the country. And nobody here is looking to do anything corrupt, at least I don't think so. So to have a policy in place that formally says we're gonna abide by the laws and the rules and no one's gonna do anything, any kind of self-dealing, I think it's a good policy to have. However, I would ask that we pull out the elected, and I would ask that we add city personnel. I don't have any other questions. I'll save that for the point where we make motions to amend, but if anyone else has any questions, I'll yield the floor at this point.
Counselor DeFlorio, do you still have a question?
No, actually, my question was, why can't we vote on this in two weeks? But I'll agree with Counselor Capone. He made the changes, and I just didn't want to spend another three hours on this. If people had a lot of questions and we had to spend another three hours on this, then my recommendation would have been just to lay it over for two weeks until we all looked at it. And, I mean, I'm okay with it. I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem voting for it tonight. But I just didn't want to waste three hours on one piece again. Thank you.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I seen this in committee originally, and some points popped out at me as a red flag. And one of them Counselor Capone touched on tonight, we as a city council have an ethics committee. We have rules and regulations put in place that the city council is to abide by, and we have a body that is made up of members of the city council that will handle conduct of our members and our employees. This, again, as Counselor Capone said, is a true infringement on us as elected officials. We don't answer to the mayor nor the administration, and we never should. It should be a complete separation of powers. I think that everybody would agree with that, and I believe this is a true infringement upon us as elected officials. The reason we have an ethics committee is just for this purpose, so that if something is done, it is brought to the attention of the members of the ethics committee, and it is dealt with. It is not dealt with in the hands of the administration, which potentially may or may have a witch hunt behind it. I don't feel as though we should be combining efforts on conduct and misappropriation and other factors that are talked about in this document. I applaud Mr. Demus for adding city council president, because I think it's the responsibility of the council president, you this year, Mr. President, to always oversee our members and to make sure that our members are participating in a good, respectful manner. But I truly believe that this is something that needs to be looked at closely, because I think it's an infringement upon us as elected officials. We answer to the people of the city of Everett, not to the mayor or the administration. Thank you.
Counselor Hanlon is the next speaker. Before you speak, Counselor, I would like to vote on this piece either way this evening. It has been before the council for a few months now, so whether there's amendments to be made or however the council feels, I think we should take action this evening instead of delaying it any longer. Counselor Hanlon?
I'm sorry you mentioned that now, Mr. Chairman, because I'd like to lay it over. And the reason I want to lay it over is because there are two sections in here that deal with the Massachusetts general law. And I have not read the Massachusetts general law in correlation with this rule that we're gonna come up with, and I would like to do that. It's Chapter 68A and Chapter 148, 123, different paragraphs, and I would like to read those before I make a choice on, I mean, I have no objection with this, but I would like to read how the state feels about what we're doing and what that means to us to have that in here. Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Mr. Demus. Mr. Demus, just so I'm caught up to speed on this, the changes that were made, you added city council president, correct?
In two locations, that is correct.
All right, and that, that reporting procedures is one of the locations, correct? And then the other one would be at
Under responsibilities.
Okay. Now, who in fact would do the investigation, if there was to be an investigation?
Ultimately, the determination of who conducts the investigation falls on the chief of staff, unless, as addressed in this policy, the chief of staff is subject to a potential allegation. It would be his determination as to who would conduct the investigation. Any type of investigation would fall underneath the executive branch. However, in committee, there was lengthy debate as to who this policy should apply to. There was a lot of talk about the council, the Ethics Commission, and quite frankly, there were some good points made, and there was some good dialogue back and forth. And I took those points and put a lot of thought into it and said, how best can we ensure that we are, number one, sending a message that this policy applies to everyone, but number two, at the same time, understanding that we have two separate branches of government? And so it made only sense that we include, which I originally did not include, the Senate Council President, I'm sorry, the city council president, to, number one, be one of the officials that has the responsibility for ensuring policies and procedures are put in place. That would be over the city council and their staff. And then, number two, also from a reporting standpoint, that they had an obligation, that they were the member of this body that would be taking in allegations and responsible for reporting.
No, I thank you for that, but according to the ex officio's ruling, which is the president, and our Ethics Commission, which would be construed of our body, we would govern ourselves, and that's always been the way it's been. We would not have an outside entity come in, such as the chief of staff, to govern us. Why would we go that way? I don't, I want you to make me understand why we're doing this.
The only reason, and my background is in
And I like the chief of staff. He's a good guy. He's sitting in the back, so, but...
And it made sense to leave him at the top of the list as far as making a determination as to which way the investigation went. My background is in fraud and forensics, and I have wrote many of these policies. The only thing I can say is I can just give you one example. I'm your CFO, but I'm also your city auditor, and I am responsible for processing all of those invoices as required, both by charter and as by Mass General Law. And it specifically states in Section 44 that if I determine or deem any invoice to be presented for payment to be fraudulent, I am not allowed to pay it.
Okay.
Well, right now, and Counselor Matusky had made some comments earlier that, you know, all of this stuff already is against the law, and I get that. I agree with you. The primary purpose for this policy is twofold. One, management tone, to set a policy not only with employees and elected officials, but also with vendors. This policy will go out with each of our new vendor policies. Number two, it produces a mechanism for employees to report, because right now, that's where our big hole is. Everything listed in here is against the law. We're not rewriting criminal law. However, there is no current mechanism in place. If somebody within my office sees me doing something inappropriately, what do they do? There's no mechanism. There's no policy that sets forth the responsibilities that we put on them. Right now, if I process an invoice from city council and presented by the president, and I deem it to be fraudulent, Mass General Law says, I don't do it, I can't process that payment. That's fine. But where do we go from there? There is no written mechanism in place, not for my frontline people that take in the invoices and process the packets. But there's, right now, there's no mechanism in place that we can give as a tool to employees to say, if you see something, here's what you do.
See something, say something.
Exactly. And that's really what this policy sets forth, is just a mechanism for existing laws. For example, one of the reasons why I included, and I thought it was a very good point, the city council president. Well, you have a clerk that actually processes your invoices. What happens if she's presented, and I'm sure that it wouldn't, I'm just using hypotheticals?
Sure.
But what happens if she was presented with an invoice or a reimbursement from one of the counselors? That she thought that there was a red flag there? What does she do?
Does she report it to you right now?
What's that?
Does she report to you what's going on? Or does she send it?
Well, now, what she would do is she would report it to the Senate Council President, and as the policy determines, if the reporting person is the one that actually you're suspect of or you have concerns with, then it would go to the chief of staff or your next department head or whoever else is in the chain of command. The chief of staff currently is the only one that makes the determination as to who conducts the investigation. But to conduct the investigation, to go from an employee or an individual seeing a red flag and getting to an investigation, there's a process that this spells out. It's not an immediate jump to there is, somebody had a concern and then an investigation starts. There would be a reporting, and if it was a member of this body, then it would go to the city council president. Now, if it was the city council president, and the chief of staff would make that reporting over to the city council president. Now, if it's the city council president, then it's gonna be the next person. It will be somebody else on the city council. The goal is to not pass the information along to somebody that has the ability to stop it from happening. So for example, if somebody within my office sees something that I'm doing that they deem inappropriate, because I'm included here, even though I'm listed as an administrator, they wouldn't come to me. Even though I'm somebody that it should be reported to, they wouldn't come to me. They would bypass me. The key is to present options, so that if there is something inappropriate occurring, then we provide a mechanism that it gets to the right people. You can't have just one person in charge.
No, I mean, I get it. I get the policy, and I get it, what you're trying to accomplish now with it, a reporting say something mechanism now through the policy, but we've always been one branch of government, this side, and then the other branch would be the mayor's side. And it's always been historically done like that. For us to actually have anybody from management side overseeing anything that we're doing, that's, I think that's the problem what people have in here. But I think it's a good policy, but we already have, like I said, our ex officio acts as the president of that Ethics Committee, and on that Ethics Committee, there's members of this board that would oversee that, and they would actually deem what was going to be, you know, transpiring to our members, our members here on the legislative side. So I sort of want to agree with Councilman Capone on this and Councilman McLaughlin, because they've been doing a lot of work on it. So I wanted you to actually give me your reasoning behind it, and I got that. Thank you for that. And I have to think about it now, tonight, if we're gonna have to vote on this tonight. So I thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Counselor Napolitano is the next speaker, but our city clerk wants to add something prior, if that's okay?
Just to Counselor Hanlon, just so you know, the laws that you speak of, 268A, has to do with ethics. That comes from my office. I mean, it's inclusive. There's a law to it, but it's, yeah, 268, so that's the conflict of interest assessments, the sign-offs, and then it's inclusive of much more in-depth laws. But that's pretty much what it is. It's telling you what you can and can't do. And then 149 looks like it actually protects the employees from management infringing on their rights if they tell somebody. They can't retaliate. So I just wanted to make that clear, what the laws, as I read them, I did a little homework on them, so you can understand that's what they do, so you know the difference between the two laws and why they're written in there. One is for the ethics violations and the procedures. 149 has to do with the protection of our rights, or my rights, as the city clerk. If I reported, the council president, he couldn't try to retaliate against me. So that seems like that's, it's in there. It's working in our favor as an employee of the city. Just, I just wanted to state that.
Counselor President, if you'll be going further. Counselor Hanlon requested to lay this over because he wanted to read information. I think we should allow that, and then if anyone has a question?
I did give Counselor Napolitano the floor, though.
Thank you. First of all, I get the idea, I get the principle of what you're looking to do here. I have no problem with it. I understand there needs to be mechanisms in place. I don't feel that the council is being signaled out, so I do think the language is being a little strong by some of my colleagues, but I'm not trying to call that into question either. Is there a method, is there a way to be able to incorporate, because of the separation between executive and legislative, is there a way to add a specific section regarding how that affects the legislative branch? And how the results of those investigations then goes forward into the normal mechanism you have in place here? I think that might, that might at least suit some of the concerns some of my colleagues have. This way here, we are addressing through our committee of ethics the issues, but there also needs to be a mechanism in place that takes it from there to apply to everyone, like everyone else. I don't see us, as city councilors investigating, being able to investigate this. All of us, for the most part, have full-time jobs. We're not here seven days a week, five days a week, 40 hours a week, though we do put in that many hours in our job and then some. But the thing is that, yes, I think in the separation of church, of church and state, excuse me, legislative and executive, we do need to be able to have the ability to at least initially police our own. But from there, those determinations do need to be forwarded through to the normal mechanism. This way here, I mean, I don't see, I mean, I understand the concerns of a potential witch hunt, but I, again, something has to have been, there has to be some smoke before this fire. So there has to be something there. And I think if we could, if there's a way to be able to incorporate that into this, so both our rules and the process of being a separate branch is played, is worked in here legitimately, so then we're there, it is able to go beyond that, should there be a finding. Is that a possibility?
All I can say is that with the changes that have been made, if there was an allegation of fraud or if I saw something that was inappropriate while I'm processing the warrants, what this policy does is it now requires that I report it to the city council president. But more importantly, Mass General Law puts a huge responsibility, a fiduciary responsibility on me. You can take this policy and not do anything with it, and we can actually get rid of it. If I see something that is inappropriate, regardless of whether it's a city councillor or if it's any other member of the city, I'm gonna follow up on it. And I'm not gonna stop until I determine whether something was appropriate or not. I don't need a policy to do that. What the bulk of this policy was and the reason why primarily, and why the city council was included, because this is actually a policy that the mayor could have implemented on his own. But to me, it is such an important policy, and it's such an important management tone, that the city collectively takes this stuff very seriously, that it was my recommendation that we actually include city council, and the mayor thought it was a great idea that we include city council and say collectively as two bodies, you know, this is the position that we're taking. We take this stuff very seriously, and when something is inappropriate, potentially inappropriate happens, we're gonna follow up. But again, that being said, if there's something from a financial standpoint, regardless of who it is, even a city councillor, you can take this policy and set it aside, and I'm gonna follow up appropriately, regardless of any policy on hand. Not because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, like you said, we all work for the citizens, and that's really how I view it. And that's why I wrote this policy, because it was so important to me when I made that presentation. So, you know, we can include additional language if you want to try to incorporate and potentially overcomplicate the issue. I'm more than open to suggestion, but again, at the end of the day, this is really a mechanism to, number one, set a tone, and number two, help employees know what to do if they see something inappropriate. Because right now, they don't have a see something, say something. If somebody is trying to process something that their department head is doing, there's no mechanism in place. They don't know who to go to talk to. And that's really what this is about. And I wanted to send a message, both from the executive branch and the legislative branch, that we as a city take taxpayer assets very seriously. But again, at the end of the day, if something's reported to me, I'm gonna do what I do, and I'm gonna follow up to make sure that either it is not happening or that we put a stop to it immediately, regardless of any policy in place. So I'm more than open to changing any language. I really want to send this message out to vendors, to everybody, to all city employees. But I'm more than willing to do that, if that's what it takes. But I really would like this to be a joint, collectively as a city, this is our policy, and this is what we're sending. And I want to send this to our vendors. I want to send this to our bond rating agencies. I want to send this to our insurance companies to say, listen, we're taking this stuff and we're trying to continually improve the city. And that's really the only reason why I am trying to do this here. But I'm more than open to listen to any suggestions, and if you want to change language, you know, let me know. I'm more than happy to take a stab at it. But again, at the end of the day, from my standpoint, I'm gonna do what I'm gonna do.
I mean, I'm not about making it more complicated. I believe in the KISS concept, keep it simple. But on the other hand, I'd also hate to see, you know, some of my colleagues not support this because they feel that we're not being represented. And I know that's not the intent. But if we need to put some language to make people feel a little more comfortable, to make them feel a little more participative... comfortable, to make them feel a little more participative and to maintain the separation, granted, no matter, no matter what the situation is with, even with a separation of judicial and executive, or legislative and executive, if somebody is guilty of something or there's an issue, it's going to get escalated beyond either branch anyway. So, I understand what you're saying there, but I'd just like to see if there's any way we can find a compromise here to make this a little more palatable for, you know, members of the city council.
I'm certainly open to any suggestions and Councillor Capone, the suggestions he made with language changes, I would have no issues with those either.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Demus, I do think that you've worked diligently on this and I understand your, your desire to put this forward and I think it's in all good intention. To say that there's no mechanism in place for see something, say something, we have an organizational assessment officer now in the city that I think has gone thoroughly through every department. I think he's an avenue that would be able to handle something of this magnitude. Your door is always open. You're a guy that's here on Fridays when the building's closed and on Saturdays is the same. You are always available to every employee in the city. You're the CFO of our community. Everybody I know feels comfortable coming to you to talk to you, whether it's an elected official or it's an employee, anywhere in the city, they can always come to you. Your door is always open and you've made that very clear from day one. So, to say that there's no mechanism in place, there is a mechanism in place and it's you and it's, and hopefully it's Dr. Easy as the new organizational assessment officer for the city. I just think that, as you said, if you see something, you're going to, you're going to process, you're going to investigate it. This allows the floodgates to open. You, at that point, if it was an elected official, have to report to the council president and they have to refer to the ethics committee that's made up of the city council. There's only a certain amount, a certain distance you can go with the football down the field and you then need to turn it over to the city council and our ethics committee if it's a city council matter. To be able to go to the length of the football field, you can't do that currently. There's only a certain point you can go to. This opens the floodgates for that. Can I just ask one question?
Always.
Where did the chief of staff come in play in this? Why is it not yourself or the organizational assessment officer? Why is it, and again, I have no, no desire of going after the chief of staff because he's actually a friend and a great guy and does a great job. But why is he the appropriate authority for this and not yourself or the organizational assessment officer?
Well, it's a great question and I don't think you're taking an attack on the chief of staff at all because primarily, these are going to be personnel issues. And the chief of staff is responsible for all citywide personnel. So, if there was something, it should go through the chief of staff, certainly, or his designee. If it's of financial nature, I'm certain that he is going to probably ask me or appoint me. I would become the designee to be involved. What if I'm away? Certainly, we have very competent legal staff. I'm sure that the city solicitor would be involved regardless of where we went with this. But in my absence, maybe the city solicitor would be involved. Maybe it has something to do, not financially, but, but another issue between two employees. And it may be since that human resources or now our new director of organization, organizational assessment, Dr. Easy. You know, there's not, there's not always a one-size-fits-all solution. It would depend on the specific example. But again, the chief of staff being in charge, the mayor's number two in charge of all city personnel, it makes sense to have him right at the top and the one making the determination.
But if that's the case, shouldn't it be the HR director if it is all personnel matters? HR director is, is the leader of all personnel for the city. Not to take it away from the chief of staff because obviously he is, but HR director is, is overseer of all employees for the city of Everett. Shouldn't it be he then maybe? It just seems like the chief of staff, for some reason, is drawn into this very heavily and I just don't, and it just links back to the mayor, mayor directly and it just seems like there's a missing link here. I think it should be a different...
Well, the chief of staff...
Go ahead, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I was just going to say, the chief of staff being head of all citywide personnel, you would want to start at your highest level. Which, which again, which is why when I made the revisions based upon discussions you and I had, it would be the city council president, you know, and so the same line of thinking.
And I respect that. And again, I just, I feel this opens up the floodgates, right? Now, there's only a certain distance you can go and then you would work with the city council and the ethics committee and you should, absolutely. But I think that this takes away any involvement of the city council to govern our body and to be responsible amongst our members with the leadership of our president. So, that's what's concerning to me in this document. Thank you.
A question?
Mr. Chairman, can we call for the question? This has been on the agenda since June and I mean, I understand people have questions, but since June, it's been in committee. How many times has it been in committee?
I know, I know we do. I'm going to allow Counselor Matusky to speak and he's going to be the last speaker.
Okay.
And then I would request that we excuse our guest and take action. I'm going to let Counselor Matusky to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Demus, you know, I've heard reports over the years that some employees have stolen gasoline from the pumps that now the city has. Heard reports of metal, scrap metal being stolen in various city departments. I never really got a printout or a readout of what actually happened. We can go to the parking department with me to tampering and so forth. I've heard these stories, okay, as a councilman. But appropriate action was taken, the person I assume gets fired, I pay the money back. I've been up here a long time. I never heard of any city councilman stealing, ever, okay? And I've served with over 120 people over the years. And if there was a problem, now, we have an expense account thing. Is there something going on with the expense account that you're not telling us?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
Because it seems to me that there's something more here that I can't really put a finger on. And the other thing is, we as councilmen, and now I'm going to take it a little more seriously, when we have contractors underperforming, they're obligated to perform a job. They're getting paid with the taxpayers' money, dragging out jobs, shoddy workmanship. And we saw, we did a park over, Mr. President, the Line Street Park, which is now part of the Wynn Casino property, but they spent $2 million there. And Counselor McKinnon and I went down, the benches were all rotted out after a year. It was a ripoff to the taxpayers. Nothing was done to that company. I'm going back, what is that, about 15, 20 years ago? Big ripoff. And $2 million was spent in that park. It was a TV set in the middle of the basketball court. It was a dump, okay? And it's not a joke. But I'm going to take a closer look at some of these projects that are going on. And they're underperforming and the work that's being done now in some of these parks is outstanding, but I'm telling you, I'm going to take a closer look myself now that you're bringing this up. But I think there's something more to meet the eye here. And nowhere in here does it say the Everett Police Department takes a role as the detective department. I don't know when you reached that point. But anyway, I just, I don't know, I don't get the point here. If somebody's committing a fraud, they're misappropriating money and corruption, hello, you should be fired immediately. Where's the big, and anybody seeing this that works for the city, our city employees are supposed to have some faith in the community and respect for the community. They're getting a paycheck, they're working for the city. They don't get paid a lot, but you're thinking of a job. So, do the right thing. I mean, you know, I've heard these stories down the city yards and some of the nicest people have been fired and I thought, well, I couldn't believe some of the stories I heard. And I was on the housing authority, somebody was caught, they got rid of those employees immediately. And some of our employees over the years have had issues with substance abuse, you know? And I hear these stories, but it's a personal nature. Most of the people that work in the city live here, so you know who they are and it's, it's almost embarrassing. But I have never, and I've been up here a long time, I've served with over 120 different councilmen, men and women, never has an allegation been made against any member that I've ever served with, and that's a long, over 35 years, okay? So, if there's something you're not telling us here tonight, I want to know about it because this, this just doesn't seem, it does not, I can't figure it out. But, now, I could be wrong too, but I agree with Counselor Hanlon. I'd like to let him look at it a little more thoroughly and give him another two weeks and I'll vote for that.
If we could excuse Mr. Demus for customary thanks.
Motion made and seconded to excuse Mr. Demus for customary thanks. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. What's the motion? Counselor Hanlon?
My motion was to lay this over for two weeks. And I, I heard our clerk explain what I was talking about and everything, but I want to read this paragraph over here where it says underneath Massachusetts General Law, chapter 149, paragraph 148A, 195 of 187, it says, "No employer or person acting in behalf of the employer shall..." Now, there's four reasons listed underneath here. I'm just going to take one of them. You can take any one you want. "...shall dismiss or threaten to dismiss an employee because the employee has acted in accordance with the requirements of this policy." Now, if you read this, what we're saying is that the employee was right. And it further goes on to say, "The violation of this section will result in discipline up to and including dismissal in accordance with the applicable federal, state, and local administrative laws." That's the employer we're talking about dismissing the employer in this section here. And you know, if an employer comes down and says, you know, "I'm going to talk to you" and I'm going to say, you know, "Leo, you did something wrong," you know, "We could dismiss you." That's a threat. That, that races this whole thing out, you know? So, I want to find out if 149, and I don't know if it is, has anything to do with the whistleblower act? Because that's another long processing and if that's what 149 is, we have to really look and read this in, right? That's the reason why I wanted to go back in so that we can study it a little bit longer. So, that's my case for referring this over for two weeks, just so we can get that information squared away.
Motion was made and seconded. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. This is to lay it over?
If I may on the motion.
On the motion, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the last person to say that we should rush into a vote. If a colleague has a legitimate question, I know that those provisions have been on the version that's been here since June, but I'm a frequent request of additional time, you know, once you pass, you pass it. The concerns I have, and I want to make sure, I think we've all echoed the concerns, there isn't any kind of allegation from this body that either our current chief of staff or the administration or, or anyone shouldn't be in charge of review process for city employees. The, and I appreciate the reason, because it's superfluous, to be honest with you. It's overkill. However, I appreciate the fact that it's for management tone. It's solidifying what is already part of the law. And as our CFO had said, he's obligated, he's going to act. The mechanism part of it, even though there may technically be no formal mechanism, ABC, the reality is you report to a supervisor. So, that's there. It's, it's really a management tone. And I know there were some, some discussions by some of the colleagues and I know that trying to find a happy medium. When it comes back before us, again, I'll be voting to lay it over, but when it comes back before us, there are some amendments that I do think we need. And at the end of the day, the problem is, there really isn't a lot of room to compromise here by incorporating the city council. Any review by the executive branch over the legislative branch is an impermissible encroachment. We just can't have it. It violates separation of powers and we can't have it. So, we'll, I'll, I'll go to agree to lay it over, but when it comes back, I'm going to be requesting that remove elected officials. There'll be some other amendments and we'll go from there. So, I appreciate the opportunity to address that.
Mr. Chairman, if there's going to be any amendments, is it possible to have them before our city council meeting of next time? Because I honestly don't think that we should be spending another 40 minutes on this, the next meeting or another hour. So, if we have the amendments ahead of time, at least we have something in front of us so that we know what we're voting on. I have no problem with the amendments. I have no problem with anybody looking at anything, but if we could please get all this information to the city clerk and have the city clerk email us on the amendments?
Okay.
Because unfortunately, we're not all on these committees. This can go back and forth for six months or a year inside a committee, but we're not there to ask the questions that we want to ask. So, any amendments, if we could please get a copy, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. If that's the case, I don't think there's a need for a roll call vote.
Before we do that, the point we just brought up...
Please be brief, Counselor.
...we have over here two amendments that the audit has asked us to put in. Do we need to vote on it this evening? That was the adding in the city council president and the city council president, two locations.
If we're just laying it over, no.
So, that'll be amended later on?
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Yes, councilors, please be ready to vote on amendments in the piece in two weeks. It has been before us long enough. Thank you. Item number 11.
Item number 11. Mr. President. Item number 11 is an order offered by Counselor Michael McLaughlin to dedicate a Veterans' Memorial Square in honor of World War II Merchant Marine Francis R. Fitzgerald. I do have a letter.
Please read the letter, Mr. Park.
This is from our Veteran Service Director, Mrs. Cristiano. Counselor McLaughlin had asked me to write to the council in, in respect to this order, namely dedicating a Veterans' Memorial Square in honor of World War II Merchant Marine Francis R. Fitzgerald. It is important to note that in World War II, the Merchant Marine seaman died as a result of enemy attacks at a rate that proportionally exceeded all branches of our armed services, with the single exception of the United States Marine Corps. As General Douglas MacArthur once said, "I hold no branch of service in higher esteem than the Merchant Marine Services." As a member of the US Merchant Marines, during World War II, Everett's own Francis R. Fitzgerald served with honor, distinction, and selflessness. This son of Everett was the recipient of the Merchant Marine emblem, the Atlantic War Zone Bar, the Pacific War Zone Bar, and the Mediterranean Middle East War Zone Bar. Please know that I fully support this proposed order and ask this body to give its favorable consideration without exception.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I want to thank Veterans Commissioner Cristiano for that extended letter. It really sums up my feelings on the matter as well as hers. But I would like to ask that we make a motion on this, that we include Counselor De La Sola on this. Mr. Fitzgerald lives across the street from Counselor De La Sola his whole life and was a family friend of the De La Solas. So, I'd like to amend this by adding Counselor De La Sola. And if any of my other colleagues wanted to join the piece, feel free to do so. But Counselor De La Sola did ask me to, to have his name placed on this.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President.
The motion was made and seconded on the motion.
I would, I would ask that I be added as well as a former lifelong Wood Six guy, so...
Motion made and seconded to...
If nobody has any objection, I think, I think it's, it's an honor to, regardless of whether you know the person or not, anybody that has served in this country, it's an honor and a privilege to have our names on it. So, if nobody has any objection, I would recommend the entire city government. I hope I'm not putting anybody on the spot.
Second motion.
I mean, I would agree with that as the only veteran in the room right this moment, that by all means, I think it's an honor to be able to honor members who have created the type of society that we live in today and the freedoms that we all enjoy. So, I would like to be added on that as well. So, I would agree with that.
It's okay with the sponsor?
It's completely okay with me and I want to thank my colleagues for joining the, this piece and happy to have them all co-sponsoring this with me.
Second. Favorable action is amended?
Motion made and seconded to amend the piece by adding the entire city council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Favorable action on the order.
Motion was made and seconded for favorable action. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor De La Sola? Counselor De Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Sonny?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President DePiero?
Yes.
We have eight ayes, zero nays.
The order is passed and thank you, Counselor McLaughlin, for presenting that. Item number 12, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 12 is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as President, authorizing the Election Commission to notify residents qualified to vote to assemble at polling places where duly registered on Tuesday, November 7, 2017, for the municipal election. Then in there to give, in their votes for the election of candidates for the following: Mayor, City Council at Large, City Council, School Committee at Large, and School Committee.
Favorable action on the order.
The order.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order. Please call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Sonny?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Item number 13.
Item number 13 is an order offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero as President, authorizing the Election Commission to cause all voting places to be properly fitted up for the municipal election Tuesday, November 7, and designating listed places and polling places in Woods 1 through 6.
Favorable action on the order.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action on the order. Please call the roll.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Sonny?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President DePiero?
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays, Mr. President.
Order has passed. Last item, number 14.
Final piece, item number 14, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Peter Napolitano, at the request of businesses in Everett Square, that the Everett Police or Parking Enforcement increase patrols in Everett Square on Saturday mornings to reduce illegal parking and congestion on the streets and parking lots around the square.
Counsel Napolitano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President. I spoke to the mayor's Chief of Staff, and, you know, I'd like to refer this to the Committee on Public Safety and Public Service with an invitation to the Chief of Staff and the mayor's office. Right now, we don't enforce the meters on, in the square. And I'm not saying that, that we should. But if you go through Everett Square on a, on a Saturday morning, it is a nightmare. I saw this past weekend, a lot of double parking, which just congested the traffic trying to come through the square. Saw in some spaces, 10 cars wedged into eight spaces. These are becoming a problem, and it's, it's actually deterring business from, from coming back into the square. So we need to take a look at this, whether it's through, through directed patrols, or having someone from Parking Enforcement just go around and just enforce the, the spaces, the, the fire hydrants, the handicap spots. But something has to be done, because right now, it's, it's becoming a nightmare. And I've been hearing about this all summer from the, the business owners in the square. So I would refer this to, I'd like to refer this to that committee, and invite the Police Chief, Mayor's Chief of Staff, and Parking Enforcement.
What committee was that, Counselor? I apologize.
Public Safety.
Public Safety and...
Motion was made and seconded to refer the piece to public safety, invite the Chief of Police, Chief of Staff, and anyone from the administration as necessary.
The Parking Enforcement.
If I have a written down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Before we adjourn, I just want to make a mention that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and any, any awareness we can give to a cause as such is a good thing. I just want to make a note of that. And there was a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.